I don't understand why this thing's not moving.
See, that's what happened last week. It was not syncing. What we did here did not sync with that. That's what happened last week. They came in and they redid all the cables.
Did that cut it off? Anything go off?
Nope. Everything's on. And it's still.
Did that cut it off?
No. It's saying no data now. But the picture's still up.
Well, I thought we might have a short meeting, but Riggs was here tonight. We might as well go to midnight.
Yeah, I was thinking. I mean, I was thinking ten o'clock, but.
Yeah, I need to get down to the car for some batteries. And some sinks.
Okay, there you go.
I was going to.
There he is.
All right, what'd you do?
Hey there.
Still not.
Yeah.
I don't want it on me.
Slide everyone get it out again for this thing. Hey, brother.
Hello.
How are you, sir?
Go back here a second.
See, this front camera's only.
I'll just put it on you guys?
That's what I'm trying to do.
How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Over there. Are you speaking tonight?
Um, maybe. I don't know.
Okay. Do you want to fill out the form just in case?
Yeah, I guess. It's the first time coming to one of these kind of things.
Yeah, just in case. Um, we'll let you fill this out. In case you speak.
Yeah.
Thank you. What's your name?
Robert.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Can you just give that back to me and I'll give it to them?
You didn't bring me a grinder, did you? Uh, no. But I'm sure I got it somewhere. Not. I got two of them. I brought some batteries and stuff. I'm gonna go down after. The meat and see if that, or if it's not, if it's too late. Depends on what time to get that.
Understood. Yeah, clock is not recognized.
Hey, Miss Elaine.
Hi, how are you doing?
How are you doing, honey? Oh, I have two by accident.
You got two of them together? Okay.
No, I only have one.
Oh, you got one. How?
And I always get two ones. I cleaned up my computer. Yeah, it just, the letter on the story. I'm giving you two.
Okay.
Is it two or one there?
Okay, and you got an extra one? Can I take one and put it in the pile? Well, that's fine. This is fine.
There's, uh, there's two there.
Oh, there's two. Okay.
Come again, Ellen. I got you.
How are you?
Your name?
Robert. Sometime it's wrong down the other way, right?
The citizens either trust us with your business, or they think we're the mom and pop. You're right. Don't even show up. Well, it's good to see you're very practical and you're thoughtful. I'm the simplest man here. I can be about myself, Maria Adams, and then as well.
So how are you doing, Tim? Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm getting by for old though.
You know, I always told people, I've never heard Tim just tell a lot. That was the first one I ever heard.
Old?
I'm old. Yeah, I'm talking about the simplest one here. I may guess that's just a matter of opinion.
If I could.
If you don't mind filling that out.
Sure.
Okay, nice. Definitely. Thank you.
I'll take this.
Okay, Andy's supposed to speak too.
Okay.
Um, you don't have to.
So, um. I don't know. We try more than. Yeah, it's kind of the.
Is this what they'll see?
Yeah, that's.
So we can leave it on that maybe?
One, now that, for some reason YouTube's only picking up. The other one.
How are you, sir?
I don't know why, I don't know.
Doing well?
So it's only going. That's what it's going to look like?
Yep.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
We can't get it off.
I mean, we can't, well, yeah, we can. We can, we can die us right. So like the one. But it won't. The only ones that are set for that, that back camera is the attorney. Podium. Yeah, the attorney, the podium.
So we need to call them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, our software. There's a bug, something setting in the software.
But you can't get the, um, you can't get the counsel.
No, see, look, look right here. It's only the front camera. YouTube's only picking up the front camera. So it's only going to be audience, clerk, podium, attorney.
Well, I tried. Well, that's what they did because when I saw they saw them.
Let's do, let's try this. Let's try. Let's try. I would say leave it on that right there, I guess, and that at least. But none of them's gonna pick up the, this.
That's all I'd want to see.
On YouTube. Now, on the other one, they should see this.
I've got Zoom ready. So just don't miss, we gets it all.
So just go ahead and sign in. Where's Zoom at? Zoom should be on this one. Now, maybe when you start it, let's see.
Recording in progress.
What'd you say, man?
I wouldn't need a microphone if I could. So I just need to call them back, come back.
Yeah, just tell them that YouTube's only picking up. Back cameras. It's not, it needs to default to home. This should be recorded. And you gotta, I mean, you gotta let anybody in. Now you need to, now you need to start the YouTube meeting. You gotta.
But there's no use changing cameras.
Not right now. So let's start, let's get that started, the YouTube meeting started. Can you handle it? All right, go ahead and do it. No, uh, uh, thank you. Let me see. Yeah, we already hit start on that, but you can try it again.
How you doing? Oh, well, you didn't go out of country with him. I'm Jamie Land. Got your spot right over there. The closest one to us.
I don't know how much I know, but I feel like I've seen you do the best I can.
Well, you probably know it more than we do. Yeah, I bet you do. Just do the, do what you can. I don't think we got anything. Yeah, not tonight. We may have a short meeting. I hope we do, but. Yeah. If it been a holiday, we wouldn't have, we'd have, we'd have moved it, but since it wasn't, we won't. Thanks for coming. Yep, right there.
Hey there. How are you? I'm Derek Ford.
Derek, Bob Douglas, how are you? I'm sitting, sitting in for Tom. Like I know the last minutes I read. Well, I told him. I was just talking to him about. Call me by, Mr. Douglas, that's my, that was my name.
How you doing?
Yes, sir.
You know anything about these water specifications?
That's a loaded question.
Hey, sir, how are you?
Good.
I'm Bob Douglas.
Then I'm glad you're not time made.
Oh, I bet it did. But you gotta remember, he lost them at years at first on, when they beat Duke, but the last one.
I know. He's equaled back out and a little bit more, so. That was a, that was a, I hate to say a tough loss, but anytime you're that close and that big of a game and. You know you can win.
I spent seven years at Chapel Hill. You know, three weeks ago, we weren't even gonna be in a tournament.
I know, I know.
And so I looked at it, it saw being a plus. Good game, you lose by three points, the team that was number one seed and.
Yeah, I just, I, if his, I mean, if his ankle had given away that last, last time and he could score right there.
I was, I figured Candice would go come back after halftime, but I was hoping they could hold him to about five short, upset going ahead, but.
But you know, I think they're gonna, they're gonna get somebody.
It's like, there's a good chance everybody's coming back except Matt.
Yeah. It'll be interesting.
It will.
Yeah, Jim's been working on it. It's only gonna.
Hello.
So the YouTube, the YouTube camera?
I am Bob Douglas.
YouTube's only picking up the back.
Well, I'm sitting in for myself. I'm having.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor coming, Jim?
I know Scott Tippett gets the Northwest Observer.
I don't know.
You know Scott?
Yes, I do. I know.
I know everything I can do to it.
Yeah, which is in our paper, actually.
He does.
He not only gets it, but he supports it.
And he said that he had sat in for Tom. At least once.
Okay. So is this, um.
You ready?
Is municipal law?
So I have to confess it is not, but Tom was struggling to find somebody to sit in for him on the week, the day before. We're good. It's all good.
Okay.
All right, good evening. We'll go ahead and get started. Mayor Crawford, uh, had, had a, uh, work emergency this evening and will not be here. Uh, so we'll go ahead and get started. Today is April the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. It is seven oh two P M. This is the regularly scheduled town council meeting for the town of Stokesdale. Uh, we'll start off with our pledge of allegiance. If you please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would Councilman Riggsby please lead us in prayer?
Yes, please bow our heads. Dear Lord. On this gracious day. We all have come together to do your work and to make sure our citizens are cared for as they should be. Please bless this council, please bless our citizens, and please bless those that continue to struggle in other parts of the world. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Robin, I'd like to note that, uh, just for the records, that, uh, Stokesdale Town Attorney, Tom Medlin, uh, is unable to be here tonight. However, Mr. Bob Douglas with Hagan and Barrett, uh, will represent, uh, the town of Stokesdale in our legal representation tonight. Okay. Uh, the first item on the agenda is to review and adopt the agenda. Guys? You know, entertain a motion or entertain any changes?
I'd like to make one addition to the agenda.
Okay.
And that would be to discuss the, uh, drink machine in the town park.
All right, Tim, we'll put that, uh, as. Let's see, twelve B. Right after the consideration of budget amendment.
Can you repeat that again?
A discussion regarding the drink machine in the town park.
Okay, that has been added to the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with Tim's revision.
Second.
Jim Riggsby's aye.
Derek is aye.
Aye.
Tim's aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is review and approve minutes. Our first set of minutes are from August twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, has council had an opportunity to review these minutes? I have.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion that I'd be allowed to abstain from voting on these minutes. This meeting took place before I was seated. I haven't listened to the audio. I wouldn't have any way of confirming whether these minutes are accurate or not as required by state law, and so that is my request.
Okay, and, and that was a motion, Tim?
Yes, that's a motion.
Okay. Is, Tim's got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Are we seconding him abstaining or?
Uh, his motion is to abstain, uh, as he was not serving at that time.
Well, I'll second the motion because I've always said I'd second a motion if somebody wanted to put something on the floor, so.
Okay, we have a first, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion?
Nah.
Uh, with not, I'll call question.
Aye.
Uh, Derek is nay.
Aye. I am aye.
All right, given that we only have four folks here tonight, that's a two to two vote. The motion does not pass. Okay. Uh, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the August twelfth, twenty twenty-one minutes, uh, as presented.
Jim Riggsby, second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Uh, with that, I'll call question.
Jim Riggsby's aye.
Derek is aye.
Jimmy's aye.
Tim is nay for obvious reasons.
Yes, sir. All right, we also have our, uh, minutes from our March third, twenty twenty-two budget workshop. Our special called meeting to discuss the budget, I should say. Has council had an opportunity to review these minutes as presented?
Aye.
All right, would entertain a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the March third, two thousand twenty-two budget workshop meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Jim Riggsby's aye.
Uh, Derek is also aye.
Jimmy's aye.
Jim Jones is aye.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have public safety reports. Uh, we have Deputy Fire Chief Randy Suther here from the Fire Department. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Been a very busy month for the Fire Department. This month, we ran ninety, or the month of March, we ran ninety-nine calls. So if we stay on that average, we will, uh, certainly break a thousand this year, and that'll be a monumental year for us. Uh, fifty-two of those were medical calls. Not uncommon that most of our calls are medical related in some form or another. Uh, the remaining were different types of calls, everything from trees down, uh, to good intent calls, to service calls for wires down, folks without power. We tend to get those calls first, even though Duke Power is the folk that need to come out and take care of that, but. We generally go look and make sure it's not a fire hazard, and then make sure Duke Power is aware. Our safety tips for this month would run around outdoor burning. People are already out cleaning up. People are already out doing their spring work, and we're already beginning to have fire calls for outdoor fires. Where people are burning debris. I would remind the folks that you can't burn manufactured products, uh, as a brush pile. So it has to be small brush, cleaned up brush from around the area, and it needs to be in an area that is protected in the sense that it's not too close to a residence or anything else that could ignite. There are lots of folks who control that outside the Fire Department. We don't control that. The Fire Marshal's Office can issue a ban, and they regulate fires within a certain distance of the home. Forestry Service regulates within a certain distance of the wooded areas near your home. They can put a ban out. Environmental Health can issue a ban because of weather conditions, as can Guilford County's air quality control. So a lot of folks have input into that. We would suggest before you light that brush pile off, give us a call at the fire station. We'll be glad to tell you if we're aware of a burn. If not, we can tell you where to go look to see if one of these other agencies have issued a burn. But biggest thing we could recommend is common sense. If the wind's gusting at thirty miles an hour, it's a bad day to burn a brush pile. If it's constant above about ten miles an hour, it's a pretty rough day to burn, unless you're gonna be right there with it the entire time. And while folks tell us we got it, we're watching it, we're taking care of it, most of the time when we get there, they're hustling to throw water, or they're not in sight. So good common sense practice for burning brush piles. Any questions for us?
No, sir. We appreciate you, Randy.
Okay, thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Next up, we have our administrative reports. Uh, we have, uh, Ms. Robin Yount, uh, to give their administrative report from the town, from the town clerk.
Uh, yes, since the last, um, regular meeting, there have been ten meters installed, fourteen applications for transfer of service. Fifty-eight meters and applications are on hold for builders that are coming up. Thirty-two meters are in stock that we have now available. Um, six hundred and seventy-two water bills have. Six hundred and seventy-two water bills have been sent out, twenty work orders have been prepared, and seventy-four eight-one-one calls have been submitted. And since the spring is here, we've had fifteen shelter rentals come on board, so we're getting calls every day to rent those shelters out for parties and things like that. There are thirty-two meters that are on backwater, working on the backflow records. We're continuing to work on the minutes and try to get them up to date, the past minutes from the last year and a half. I have received my notary certification, so that's all done. And we're staying in touch with G F L. on the workflow with the changeover that'll be effective seven one twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. So that's, they're proceeding and they're staying in contact with our office on that transition as well.
Okay.
One thing I would like to ask on the rentals is, are we posting the weekly schedule for the rentals down there?
Yes, we are.
Okay, because that's been an issue in the past.
Yeah, they're in the little locked, little kiosk down there.
And also, if you would just talk to Priscilla and just make sure that people are renting, that they need to bring extra trash bags, especially if it's on the weekend, because as we get busy and we get into the holiday season, you know, we don't have someone coming down there every day to do the trash. So if they're, they're going to, they can't leave trash outside the can, they need to bring some bags and take it with them, or put it in a can or something.
And we'll check it on Monday morning because a lot of those, you know, we do have the deposits that are refundable, but we do need to check it, make sure everything's in check before we refund that deposit.
Yeah, just a suggestion that they bring some bags with them, so they'll have some, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Next up is a report out from the Planning Board, we have no Planning Board members here. Robin, are you aware of any cases that you know of that might be in two weeks?
There is a case that's coming up, I did not bring it in here with me, but I did submit that to the, to be scheduled to be in the paper on this Saturday and next Saturday as well, and I can forward that to you, I just didn't bring it in.
No, no, that's fine, I was just inquiring, that's perfect.
So there is one, it's not technically a public hearing, I did talk to Oliver today. He said we could go either way with it in our ordinance, it wasn't necessary that we had to, but we chose to go ahead and just post it not as a public hearing, but just as this matter will be in front of the Planning Board, so.
Wonderful.
So that'll be running on Saturday, this Saturday and next Saturday.
All right, no report out from the Events Committee, although we'll be talking about a non-town sponsored event and public comments. Any update from the Property Committee from Mr. Riggsby or Landreth?
Not at this time.
Okay, next up is Financials, we have our Finance and Budget Officer, Ms. Kim Thacker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll start with the General Fund on the balance sheet first. And the Bank of Oak Ridge with the checking account, money market account, we have twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifteen cent. Our total C D Rs in the Bank of Oak Ridge is two million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-one cent. The Fidelity Bank checking account is two hundred and seventy-five thousand, twenty dollars and twenty-seven cent. Petty cash is a hundred and fifty, total bank accounts is two million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cent. Our accounts receivable, which include February and March, total is nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy cents, of which the salary in FICA, which is Gary, is one thousand, one twenty-nine eighty-seven. The water reimbursed, the shared overhead expense is eighteen thousand, two thirty-four eighty-three. We also have opened up the restricted fund for the art funds, and in that account as of to date is three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cent. The total for this month, for March, for the shared overhead expense that the Water Enterprise will reimburse the General Fund back is eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cent. And Gary's salary in FICA, employer of FICA, is five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-two cent, and that's for the month of March. I believe that's all that I have for March on the General Fund. I'll move to the water. I have something.
Hold on a second, I have a question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
At the end, are we, do we have Gary's salary in the right spot, or are we reallocating at the end of the year to the Water Enterprise Fund for that? You're speaking about Gary Machusis.
The, yes, the General Fund pays all of the salaries, including Gary's, because the payroll depart, the payroll A D P. will not allow me to add another, they won't allow me to use the water expense fund, the Water Enterprise Fund. So therefore, I have to journal it, because it all comes out of the General Fund. So that is why it's separated at the end of the balance sheet, because it's not included in the, in the overhead reimbursement amount, that's totally separate.
Okay, at the end of the day, how do we get those monies credited back to the General Fund and allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund?
It's journaled, I'll do a journal entry at the end of the, at the end of the month, it's a journal entry that goes, the Water Enterprise account reimburses the General Fund for that month, for that money. So it's, it's a payable to the Water, it's a payable on the Water Enterprise account, and it's a receivable on the General Fund. But on the Water Enterprise and the budget versus actual, that is included in the, on the budget versus actual where the payroll line item, twelve thousand, ten, and twelve thousand, eight, it is not included in the reimbursement part at the bottom, it's totally separate.
Okay, you may have to school me a little further after class sometime about that, but I won't hold this up tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, the Water Enterprise account, the total C D Rs are four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-two cent. The checking account with the Water Enterprise is five hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cent. Our capital reserve fund is total one hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cent. The North Carolina Management Fund account is five hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cent. Our regular savings with the Water Enterprise is forty-five thousand, fifty dollars and twenty-five cent. Total fiscal year and previous before, water accounts receivables is twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and seven cent. As I stated before, the shared overhead expense that the Water Enterprise owes the General Fund is eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cent. And the General Fund, I'm sorry, the Water Enterprise also owes for Gary's salary, the total of five ninety-nine fifty-two. There's something else I want to state, the total, hold on, let me find my sheet. The C R F. funds that go to the Capital Reserve for the month of March is, bear with me, guys, I apologize. I had it right here a few minutes ago. Six thousand, seven hundred and fifty, fifty dollars for the month of March were the capacity fees that were taken in for that month. Also, I received an email today from John Frye. He is with, he's a C P A., he's the Vice President of the North Carolina, Carolina Capital Management Trust. And he emailed to let me know that he had left some documentation here at Town Hall for me today, stating that the Federal Reserve has increased the federal funds rate, twenty-five B P S. in March, and has announced their plans to continue making additional increases through December. Our rate with us has already increased, our rate with them has already increased to twenty-one percent. And he wanted to let me know for budgeting purposes, he's letting folks know that using an average of one point zero or one point five zero percent earnings for the upcoming fiscal year may actually be conservative based on the information from the feds. So I just thought I'd share that email with you guys.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
All right, next up is Citizens Comments, I would like to welcome Mr. Robert Self. Mr. Self, if you could just, when you step up to the mic, if you could say your name and address, please, sir.
Yeah.
All right.
Good evening, I'm Robert Self, eighty-two oh five Barbolo Drive, here in Stokesdale, two seven three five seven. Yeah, so a pretty straightforward question. I'm a resident of Angels Glen, I bring my family to this park often. I'm just curious about purchasing benches in memory of, there's a family in Angels Glen that's kind of gone through a, through a tough time, and I think our neighborhood should get together and, and fund that, and, and put a bench in there in honor of their son. So I think it's an ongoing conversation, just, I appreciate Jim answering the phone I called the other day and, and being prepared to talk this up when we got here. So that's kind of where I'm at with it, I'm just ready to hear your opinion.
I certainly think that's a nice gesture, I'm aware of the family you're speaking of, and they certainly need our prayers right now, and I think it's a good idea. I'm a resident of the neighborhood and would be happy to obviously contribute to such a cause.
Awesome, I appreciate it.
Once, once we get to the point where you've raised the money and you're ready to make the purchase, what I'll do is I'll put it on the agenda and we'll just take a vote, you know, to basically make that purchase on behalf of your donation, and then we'll move forward from there. I know, we've got benches down there now, as long as it's consistent with what we've got now, and same color, same manufacturer, I don't, you know, I don't see any issue, but we'll, we'll run it by the council and we'll take a vote and.
Understood, I appreciate it.
I, I would like to take into account, somebody needs to pay the installation cost to decide whether or not you're raising money for that or just for the purchase of the bench exclusively.
Well, I, my discussions with the gentleman earlier, yeah, we, we talked about that, that, and that's something we, we need to talk about, because the person that apparently did the others is no longer a vendor per se. So we need to figure out, do we need to contract that out, or is that just something simple, we can just use some sack creep and do something, you know? I mean, what do we, I looked at them, they don't look too complicated to do, so.
I, I think it's probably within our capability, we just need to make sure that, you know, they're installed safely so they can't move and harm anybody.
Right, so we, we've had that discussion, and I don't, I don't want to overestimate the cost of the bench and add, you know, maybe a couple hundred dollars for materials, and, and somebody needs to be prepared to dig the hole for lack of better words.
Jimmy's real strong, I just wanted to mention it so we can factor that in, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Self.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome Ms. Eileen Theory.
Do you get tired of seeing me?
Not at all.
Okay, I'm going to read from this because I want to make it clear. Okay. Good mor, good evening, good morning, excuse me, I did sleep late. Just to refresh your memory, I addressed the council on March seventh, the meeting of this year in reference to maintaining the greenery surrounding the town clock. I had requested that since the clock is property of the town of Stokesdale, you as our representatives would approve issuing a check to reimburse the nonprofit Friends of Stokesdale Organization. The purpose of refreshing the area was performed out of respect for the location of our Fire Department facility. In view of the fact that the town park is well maintained, it is not out of the question that I request our nonprofit be reimbursed. If not, you're expecting me to issue the check, then, this is an important question, can I claim part ownership of the clock? If I have to be maintaining it? But I really feel that, in view of the fact that it is town property, that I should be, that the organization should be reimbursed. Now, I, I requested that on March seventh, and I was hoping tonight you might have had it on the agenda, but I guess you are expecting me to pay it, so if that's the case, I'd rather know now than later. Have you even discussed it, or has it crossed anybody's mind that that's your clock there?
Ms. Eileen, may I, you haven't given us an amount tonight.
I did, I gave, I gave a printout to Mayor Crawford.
She, she did, Ms. Theory?
I don't have it, what, do you know the amount, do you have it in front of you, just so I can take note of it?
No, I don't, because I gave over my copy. It was four something.
Hundred dollars, ten thousand, what, what kind of?
No.
Four hundred and something, I believe.
Four hundred and something.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
So, you know, it's, it's a long time that we're waiting, if you want me to pay it, I will, but I don't see why I should be maintaining. I, I had an offer for that clock to go somewhere else, and the gentleman would have maintained the area around it. Now, I think out of respect for the Fire Department, because they keep their property so nice, it behooves me that you would even question, why should you pay it? So do I get any kind of an answer that you'll consider it, or you haven't considered it?
It, it hasn't been placed on the agenda, that's obvious.
Well, I'm really surprised, because that was March seventh that I came.
It, it was actually April seventh, and that was past our agenda deadline for this meeting.
April seventh?
Yeah, you, you did it at a budget meeting, didn't you?
No, I don't.
Unless time is just flying by, and then.
I, I didn't, oh, wait, April seventh, was that a budget meeting that you held?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't speak then, because you had so much going on. Well, she could check the minutes, let's not split hairs over it, but, you know, if it's something you don't want to do, just let me know right now, because this is going beyond, and I have other obligations that I have to meet.
Okay.
We need, I, I guess Mike needs to put it on the agenda, because he took the paper.
We can't vote on it based on a public comment.
If it's not on the agenda, it's not on the agenda, okay, then I will ask you this. I am going to write the check to Stokesdale, I will even make a copy so that you will know I'm not pulling your leg. Then you'll write the check to me, because I can't, I can't keep waiting for an answer to this.
I don't understand, you would write the check to the town?
No, I'm going to write the check to the Friends of Stokesdale, because they put the money out as a nonprofit. I will put the money back in, and then I'll ask you to give me a check, because at this point, it's getting ludicrous that we can't just close something. And here's a gentleman that comes, either he or the other gentleman comes and gives reports about safety and everything else, and we have to quibble over re, reimbursement?
I, I don't think we can take a deep dive to this based off of public comment, but I, I'm pretty sure there is a written agreement with the Stokesdale Fire Department that the town entered into.
May I ask a question?
That, we should probably review that before we, you know, start down this road.
Start down what road, sir?
Expend more funds at that site.
You're kidding me.
The town already pays the power bill for this clock.
But you, you, you own that clock, I don't own that clock. And one of your, one of your former councilmen, I'm going to talk over here now, one of your former councilmen chose that spot at a meeting at my house, and I had an offer from a gentleman that would have taken care of the whole caboodle, but he wanted it there, so for that, you're going to consider whether you should pay for that?
Ms. Eileen, I, I would, I would just caution you based on my opinion, just on my opinion, if you expect the town of Stokesdale to pay for something, you should get the authorization before the money is spent.
I'll pay for it, forget about it.
That's just my opinion.
Well, can I ask a question of the gentleman that just spoke about a bench, was that on the agenda?
It was, it was in public comments, and that's not town money he's, he's asking for. I believe he's saying the money would be raised through the community.
Okay, well, Tim, rest assured, Eileen has her checkbook out tonight, and I will take care of it. And I don't think I'm coming to any more council meetings, because I'm getting a little bit disappointed that you consider maintenance of a clock to be out of the question.
Ma'am, what I consider is that we have to follow all the state regs and all the towns' rules every time we spend a dollar.
I know that, Tim, my heart bleeds for you.
And I didn't mean to be confrontational, but some of the rules I don't understand.
Ms. Eileen? Hold on, don't, not going to, hold it, hold it, hold it a second, please.
Did you ever thank me for the three thousand, something like that?
Don't get upset, we've got, what we'll have to do, you know, Mike's got the paper. We'll have to get it on the agenda for discussion. And, I mean, we can't just.
No, I don't expect it now, but to say that I have to do this or that, fine, okay, I'll do it next time. But, Tim, don't split hairs with me. Because I was a very generous woman.
Ma'am, I would be glad to discuss this with you after the meeting and private meet with you. I just don't want to burn up too much council time with us having a conversation back and forth. I have no angst against you.
All right, would like to welcome Mr. Dan Suter to the podium. Dan?
Sure, thank you. My name is Dan Suter and just want to introduce myself to the town council, the individuals here and individuals who are watching online. Again, Dan Suter, I am running for county commissioner in District 3. I'm a candidate for that. I have a platform of freedom, integrity and advocacy to advocate for the individuals within our community where, whether it's in Guilford County, the District 3, Stokestale, Summerfield, Oak Ridge and other towns in that particular area. I am a private citizen, I am not a career politician. I'm just a citizen stepping up to try to make a difference in our community of things that have happened over the last three years. I have over forty years of project management, excuse me, of business experience. Thirty years of that has been business project management experience of integrating large, complex projects for the last fourteen years with a global sixteen billion dollar organization as a whole. So I'm just, again, stepping up as a concerned citizen to run for Guilford County Commissioner in District 3 as a candidate for that position. So I just want to introduce myself to the council as well as people online and individuals here this evening. Any questions I can answer for you?
Would you just refresh us on the boundaries for District 3?
Sure, District 3 goes northwest Guilford County, which is Stokestale, goes down through Oak Ridge, part of Summerfield, down to the airport, basically west of Battleground Avenue and east of the airport, down into portion of Sunset Hills. It's about fifty-three thousand individuals as a total whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Foy, would it be okay if I ask him a question?
Of course, I've got one too.
Okay. Mr. Suter, I would like to know what your position is on the method of sales tax distribution that Guilford County uses, ad valorem versus per capita, because the town of Stokestale is, we feel, is being seriously short-changed by its current method.
And I did review some information on that today, sent responding an email and I am for the per capita direction for the sales and use tax.
Thank you, sir.
Dan, I've got to ask, Tim's question pertained to the town of Stokestale, which obviously we're all here to serve. Just as a citizen, I have some just grave concerns about our Guilford County schools. So I'd be remiss not to get your thoughts on that.
In general, I'm sure you'll hear from Maria Adams in a little while. One of my, one thing I'm proponent for is school board transformation. It's not a platform item because that's something I can change as a commissioner, but that's one thing I'm a proponent for. Been indirectly involved with Takebacker Schools who have raised five different candidates to help with that school board transformation as a whole in relation to the 1.7 billion dollar school board referendums coming up. Yes, there's a lot of maintenance that's needed in our schools. When you look at the actual operating budget of 1.2% of their total operating budget that goes for school maintenance and then they take out approximately over $700,000 to build a new recording music studio and not maintain our schools, I think there's challenges with that.
Hold on, are you saying that the recording studio, the money came from the maintenance budget?
The capital maintenance budget, that's my understanding.
So, okay.
We can talk about it offline.
Yeah, well, boy, we could. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much. Be happy to discuss anything offline with anyone, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Like to welcome Ms. Maria Adams. Welcome, Maria.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Maria Adams, I reside at 5999 Morganshire Drive in Summerfield. I've been a resident of the Northwest area for twelve years, moved here from Greensboro. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and I also thank each of you for your service to the town of Stokestale. As a local resident of the Northwest area, I'm also a small business owner and an advocate for my community. At a recent Guilford County School Board meeting, the Honorable Pro-Tim Mayor Derek Foy gave public comments regarding the lack of funding to our Northwest area schools. Mr. Foy reported the Northwest area schools were receiving 23% less per pupil than other schools in our district. My son attends Northwest High School and I, like many of you, have concerns with the lack of funding for the Northwest area schools. A few months ago, as a business owner, I was contacted by the Northwest High School PTO and asked to participate in their mobile makeover fundraising efforts. The email stated the following. Even though our school has been identified as one of the worst facilities, our school has not been identified as one of the schools that will receive assistance from the bond money. To help with the school's growth in the early 1990s, the school district delivered twenty-four mobile units for a temporary solution to our overcrowding. Here, we are thirty years later and those units are still at the school in their original form. Same roof, same carpet, same everything. Again, that is a direct quote from the email that I received from the Northwest High School PTO. Guilford County Schools has a 1.7 billion dollar school bond on the upcoming May primaries as County Commissioner Candidate Dan Suter just mentioned. I feel it's important for Guilford County residents to be informed about how GCS is spending our tax dollars, bond monies and other funds. Of the 300 million dollar bond referendum that passed in 2020, GCS has already encumbered $24 million on project management, design and some site work. And I quote that, that was quoted by the CFO, Ms. Angie Henry. In my opinion, this is an exorbitant amount of money for design and site work. There are nine schools slated to be addressed with a 300 million dollar bond. However, the superintendent recently admitted that the new Kaiser Middle School, budgeted at 55 million, could cost two to three times that amount. And inflation alone cannot be the excuse. According to the CFO's team, the design of Kaiser Middle School is still in this schematic phase and to my understanding, is causing the potential construction costs to be way over budget. In addition to the wasteful spending of 300 million dollar bond money and of our taxpayer funds, GCS has also been, in my opinion, deceiving Guilford County residents by, quote, signing over North Carolina lottery money to the Board of County Commissioners. According to this letter to the editor from Christina Reiser, recently published in the Summerfield Scoop, I shall share an excerpt, if I may. I hope that I'm not over my time.
You're okay.
Thank you. This is, I'm almost finished, thank you so much. Since 2007, the Guilford County Board of Commissioners and the Guilford County Board of Education has been applying North Carolina lottery funds to debt service. Per the GCS Chief Financial Officer, Angie Henry, this practice is due to a, quote, verbal agreement between the B O C C and the B O E. The amount of money in question totals over 87.5 million dollars. Since 2016, under the helm of Superintendent Dr. Sharon Contreras, over 28.5 million of those dollars have been applied to debt service. Per the North Carolina Department of Instruction, manual public school building capital fund lottery funds do not require a local dollar match and can be used for capital needs, including purchase of land and construction, i.e. renovations, additions, new buildings and infrastructure to serve educational facilities. Further, Article 38A of the North Carolina General Statutes outlines how these funds are spent. Per NCGS 115C-546.1, the fund shall be used to assist county governments in meeting their public school building capital needs. And per NCGS 115C-546.2 outlines qualifying capital outlay needs in states. In the event a county finds that it does not need all or part of the funds allocated to the capital outlay projects, the unneeded funds allocated to the county may be used to retire any indebtedness incurred by the county for public school facilities. So in conclusion, the B O C C and the B O E are, the B O C C is requiring the B O E to release lottery funds to satisfy debt services when there are obviously existing capital needs in our districts such as the mobile units at Northwest High School. So as a resident of Guilford County and a taxpayer, this very much concerns me that the North Carolina lottery money is being used towards debt service rather than the construction and renovation of our buildings. And I don't think that it's fair for Guilford County to request a 1.7 billion dollar bond when there were other funds available for those needs. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
And I may be wrong on which phase it was in, but wasn't the Northwest Middle land purchase, isn't that, is that in the first phase of the new bond that we're voting on? Or is that in one of the older phases?
I actually don't know the answer to that, but it looks like Mr. Foy may have some information.
Okay, so in 2020, or maybe it was 2019, time flies, there was a 300 million dollar bond passed. I voted for that bond. I'm going to talk about this bond in my closing comments, y'all were inspiring me. To answer Jim's question, no, Northwest Middle was not in that 300 million. But if I'm looking at their priority list, it's a document from Guilford County Schools, dated Guilford County, or titled Guilford County Schools 2019 Facilities Master Plan, last revised February of 2022. It looks like Northwest Middle School replacement is on there and would be funded by the 1.7 billion dollar bond.
Thank you, I knew I had seen it, I just couldn't remember which document, but that still does not address Stokestale Elementary, does not address Oak Ridge Elementary, does not address the, once they rebuild the middle school or, I mean, you know, they expand in the high school, there's no funding for the high school to be expanded, so that's a very short-sighted effort.
Where the middle school is going to be actually demolished and replaced with green space.
Oh, okay, it's my understanding that that was going to be the land used to expand the high school with.
Well, you're thinking practically that that land would be used to have extra classrooms to educate our children. I love green space. Who doesn't? But maybe there's a problem we're not aware of, maybe there's a, maybe it's septic. I mean, that's a real problem.
Mr. Foy, we do need to limit our conversation about this and not being an agenda item. I mean, I'm willing to talk about it for hours, but for the sake of order.
We may do that here in an hour or so, but you're absolutely right, Tim. But Ms. Adams did ask if we had any questions and I do have a question. So I would like to ask that. You said a whole lot, so I'm trying to understand this thing about the lottery.
Yes, sir.
So you have from the North Carolina Education Lottery, so you have that bucket. Now, you know, I think the perception is, from some folks is, gee, this lottery is going to completely fund all of our schools in the state. And it does raise, I think, seven or eight hundred million dollars, I think. Actually, you know what, leave that number out because I may be getting mixed up somewhere else. It raises a lot of money, but it's only a small percentage of the total school needs.
Correct.
But with that being said, am I understanding you correctly that, so a state government can't give money directly to the schools because they're not a taxing entity? They would need to give money to Guilford County.
Correct.
Am I understanding you correctly that Guilford County Schools has turned down about five million dollars a year? But because, and the law says that this money shall be used. The way I read the law is whenever the word "shall" is there, it's "must", you know, it's what you need to do.
Yes, sir.
That the money shall be used for public school capital needs. So is in a way, in a way, is this by not accepting that money from the state through the county, is that saying that we don't have any capital needs?
That is correct. If I may read from Statute 115C-546.2 so that I don't misrepresent the information. It states here, "In the event a county finds that it does not need all or part of the funds allocated to it for capital outlay projects, including planning, construction, reconstruction, enlargement, improvement, repair or renovation of public school buildings, for the purchase of land for public school buildings or for equipment to implement a local school technology plan, the unneeded funds allocated to that county may be used to retire any indebtedness incurred by the county for public school facilities."
Okay, so with that, I don't dispute that it's proper, per the law, to require indebtedness with that money. But before you do that, you should take care of your capital needs?
That's correct, that is correct. So my understanding is that the Board of Education has made a decision that instead of using the approximate five million dollars per year for the last five to six years towards construction costs, renovations or things that can be applied according to the statute, they have in turn said there were no capital needs in our county and it's very clear that in Northwest High School that we have mobile units that need to be replaced.
It's clear right up here up the road as well that we have a lot of needs.
Absolutely.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, oh, there's one more citizen comment and I would be hung if I didn't mention it. It's from Ms. Rachel Foy. Her address is 8214 Kergmore Court. Mrs. Foy is the president of the PTO at Stokestale Elementary. The PTO is sponsoring a, it's called a Stokestale Fun Run and Bike Parade. The date of this is Friday, May the 6th. It'll occur at Town Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is a special event and it's open to all the public in all ages. Invite your friends, parents, grandparents, et cetera, and bring your bike, scooter, skates, wagon, or even just your own two feet over to the park for a great evening. Registration is $15 and includes a T-shirt. Both kids and adult sizes available. I'll make sure she has a size 3X in that. "In addition to the Fun Run and Bike Parade, the Big Cheese Truck and Sweet Oasis will be there for dinner and a sweet treat. We will also have yard games, music and more. Make sure you start thinking of ways to jazz up your bicycle, scooter, et cetera, because there will be decorating contests with prizes." So it sounds like the PTO has put together a nice community event that'll take place at our Town Park on a couple Fridays from now, Friday, May 6th. And they're also going to use the opportunity to raise money, much-needed money for our schools. So thank you to the Stokestale PTO.
And what's that date again, Mr. Foy?
It is Friday, May 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Stokestale Town Park.
At some point, do we need to vote on this?
The PTO has filled out the proper paperwork to.
Just checking, you think we're good, okay.
I mean, they filled out the facilities use paperwork, they're not renting it out exclusively, they're opening it up inclusively.
Just thought I'd better ask.
And you're spot on, my friend. Okay, that concludes our public comment period. With that, we're going to move on to old business. Item number eight on the agenda is the consideration of purchasing a laptop slash desktop computer for the mayor council and storage of documents. This was continued from the March 10th meeting. Mr. Rigsby?
Yes, this is my item. So after some discussion in the last meeting, based on some of the uncapped cost on some of the items, I went back to total solutions and negotiated a flat fee for the setup for full.
for the setup for four hundred fifty dollars. I also went ahead and selected the laptop for fifteen forty-four, fifteen, I'm sorry, eleven fifty-four eighty. And the hundred fifty-eight dollars listed is, is kind of like a hub or a docking station, if you would. It's a new version of a docking station. So that laptop will be able to be transitional if we need a backup in, in the town hall instead of getting a regular fixed computer in there. The total cost on it is now eighteen eighty-two forty-five, and that was under the, the dollar amount that we had discussed. So I'd like to put it up for a vote at this time.
You have a motion for, sir?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize TCS Total Computer Solutions to purchase a laptop, a switch, Dell switch, and to install and bring onto the domain these items for the total sum of one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, I will, I will second that motion.
This will be completely set up? There won't be any?
That is correct. It'll be completely turnkey when it's done.
All right. Okay, Mr. Rigsby, I appreciate you delving into this and grabbing the bull by the horns on it. You know, I told council last meeting, I think, that I kind of had a preference for desktop, but I've gotten used to not getting my way down here.
I, I apologize. I did not, I did not take note of that preference, but. That's, that was, I just didn't hear it.
Whatever council wants to do. But I, I do have this question that helped me understand because the older I get, the less I know when it comes to computers. Is this going to be hardwired into the wall in the, what we call the mayor's office where, for, for?
For internet?
Yeah, for internet, what have you.
Honestly, I would have to go look. I would say it would be hooked up the same way that one in there now is. And I would assume since it's an older version of a desktop, it probably doesn't have wireless card in it. So it's probably, it's probably plugged into, you know, a Cat five cable to the wall. So I would assume we would plug in, and the switch.
So Dell one thousand switch that is confusing me, that's a hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
All right, so what the switch is, the, the basics of the switch, it's basically a little square box that has a bunch of ports on it that plugs into the computer. So instead of a computer coming with maybe one or two U S B ports on the sides, this is a, a multi-use. So it allows to plug, plug in extra things like printers, extra monitors, things like that.
Okay, so that is not necessarily the hook it into the, to the hardwired system in the building. That, where my mind is going, I, I just didn't want us to have another proposal in front of us in two months to rework the wiring in that office and connect the, this computer to the wall. I just would like to address it all at one time, make sure we get.
It's a, like I say, it's a, I wish, we've got one already on, is it on Robin's computer? It's a, instead of everything hooking to the computer itself, it's just a separate box that can, you can hook more things to.
It's for basically output from this laptop rather than input. I was just thinking about the deal where, you know, we just had to buy that connection to that TV. It just seems like we never get finished here.
No, I promise you, I'll handle it. The, I'd had to look at it to see if the, coming out of the wall plugs into the switch or to the computer. But either way, if it all plugs into the switch, there's one line, main line that plugs into the computer that carries everything on that line.
I don't think I don't appreciate your effort.
But it will, I promise you, it will work seamlessly when I get done.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table? All right.
Jim Rigsby's aye.
All right, Derek is also aye.
Jimmy's aye.
Tim Jones is aye.
All right, that brings us to new business. Item number nine is the consideration of an amendment to revise the town of Stokesdale water line specifications. Mr. Jones?
Why is this Mr. Jones? All right. Ms. Martin is not here. And I think that's handicapping us a little bit. She has been the main interface with Hazen and Sawyer as, as well as the other parties involved. Before we, let me back up just a second. Forgive me for this, but did, did that motion that we just voted on include an amount read into the record?
I did, I did read it into the record. I can reread if I need to.
No, no, as long as you did that. I just failed to capture it in my notes. It was eighteen eighty-two forty-five.
Yes, it's on your, it's in your agenda package. The quote is.
Okay, I'm back to where we were now. We have in our package town of Stokesdale standard water line specifications that are dated revised April the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. That cannot be correct as we didn't meet on April the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. I, I believe these to be the specifications that we voted on that Hazen and Sawyer provided, reviewed and revised and provided the draft to the town of Stokesdale that we voted on in March. I can't state that with a hundred percent certainty. Then this set that's marked up with the yellow highlighting here that I got in my right hand is a draft prepared by Hazen and Sawyer to correct basically some grammar, grammar errors that Ms. Martin had caught and gone through. And she's worked with them to make these small corrections. And I, and I believe them mostly to be small corrections. I, I don't see, we had one, uh, one issue with the town's requirement that a developer engineer provide the hydraulic modeling for a new development to the town of Stokesdale at the beginning of the process, rather at the end, that Mr. Gene Robertson called and that Aaron with Hazen and Sawyer provided a, a draft correction to the town of Stokesdale. Ms. Yant, you don't have that at your fingertips, do you? Okay. So we have the grammar errors we're working on. We have the correction regarding hydraulic modeling. And then the other item that I want to call attention to council and discuss is the issue of six inch water mains versus eight inch water mains. And regarding this, what I believe to be correct is the town of Stokesdale had water specifications that were dated two thousand seventeen. And then those two thousand seventeen specifications were voted on by council and changed in two thousand nineteen. We've had some confusion about which version is the correct version with the two thousand nineteen specs. And now basically we have two thousand twenty-two specs that are in effect. And I'm going to read this verbiage on page two that's under the heading of specified minimum requirements for water main construction. Item number two, and that being "All main water lines will be run with six inch or eight inch PVC class nine hundred or as indicated on the approved contract drawings." Okay, the issue is this. To the best of my knowledge, the two thousand seventeen specs and the two thousand nineteen specs required the water mains to be eight inch water mains. It seems like our specs, as far as the requirements go, are going backwards. I, I don't, I'm not aware of any council vote that would explain this. I, I believe that mostly this impacts fire flows and maybe not so much everyday use. On the other hand, I believe it's, it's of some benefit to have the smaller lines because it allows for the water to remain fresher since the water is used faster. And we don't have water aging issues in the lines. I'm a layman, not, obviously not qualified to speak to this in depth. I just know what our two thousand seventeen spec said. I don't know what our two thousand nineteen spec say, and I can read what these are, are specifying. It's six inch or eight inch PVC class C nine hundred. My suggestion is that we revise this to read "Run with eight inch PVC class nine hundred and delete the six inch." The other puzzle that I don't have any explanation for, I, I hope to one day find somebody that can explain this, but we have a number of new developments that are, have been recently built out as far as the infrastructure. And they have six inch water mains in them when the two thousand nineteen specs were in effect specifying eight inch water mains. You know, if another council member has the answer for this, I'd, I'd like to hear it. So what I'm going to do here is make a motion that we make the changes that Ms. Martin has flagged regarding the grammar errors that we incorporate the corrections applied by Aaron with Hazen, Hazen and Sawyer regarding the hydraulic modeling submittal to the town. And that we change this specification from reading with six inch or eight inch to read "will be run with eight inch." And then further, I'm going to suggest that we continue this item until our May meeting to give council members an opportunity to review all this information to receive any public input from citizens, engineers, developers, or anyone else that may want to, may have a comment for council or an idea or a suggestion. That is my motion.
I'll second the motion. I may have a question.
I hope I can answer.
So I, I have a question as well. So are we, are we voting to table it or are we voting to approve it?
My motion is to continue it to the May meeting and vote on it then.
Okay.
If, if, if at the May meeting that we need to amend the motion, then we need to amend the motion.
But your motion is to update the specs instead of reading six or eight to just have eight?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I, I just explained my rationale.
No, that, that's, that's the motion I seconded, so I'm glad we're on the same page.
I'm sorry.
My question was, in two thousand seventeen, eight inches were in the water?
That is my best understanding, sir.
They were there in February of two thousand twenty when, when, when I voted on this then too. So, so, so let's get those eight inches in there and deal away with six. Unless somebody can explain to me. You mentioned water age. That makes, I mean, there, there's a lot of practicality there. Pressure comes to mind too. But it seems like we went eight inches for a reason, and I, I don't see a reason to go back. But again, I'm a layman.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask the town attorney here because this motion is a little convoluted. Does, does this sound workable to you, sir?
I think it makes all the sense in the world. You've raised issues about what has happened in the past and trying to conform that with what this is. It makes sense to postpone it and when you've got a little more information.
Okay. I do support going back to eight inches. That's what, what I voted for two years ago. It sounds like what council voted for four years ago. We'll keep an open mind. And if an engineer says different, then I'm going to go with what the engineer says. So I will, I have seconded Tim's motion because I'm going to vote for it.
Can we get some input from Randy to see on, on? Did you have any discussions on the difference between eight or six?
I don't know if.
You want to step up to the podium, sir?
I don't know if Todd had any discussions with the council when y'all voted on that in two nineteen, twenty nineteen or not. I don't, I don't recall. I think I can speak on behalf of the fire department that we certainly prefer eight over six because it gives us more volume of water, which impacts our ability to safely fight fire. We were confused, and I, I think Tim's aware of our confusion over why it was allowed for the contractor to pick and choose six or eight in mixed lines. And there are some developments, I think, with mixed lines.
Yeah, and sometimes we can't.
The system was put in, I think, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, for potable water reasons, not for fire protection. But we've benefited for years as citizens, as a taxpayer I have. And we've benefited at the fire department, and we've all benefited from the insurance rating because of the hydrants being in. So obviously, when we can get the maximum use out of them, that's our preference. And eight inch gives us a better use than six.
Yeah, and, and Randy, I would say if, if you or Todd or your board wants to stress any point concerning this, you know, you're certainly welcome to send a town, an email, a letter, you know, whatever you think appropriate.
Sure.
You know, you, you folks follow certain standards that the town doesn't get involved with, with firefighting, whether they be national or state or county.
Sure.
And, and, you know, this board doesn't know what it doesn't know.
Sure. And, and you are aware that we're doing the testing on those hydrants. So we've got numbers if you need them.
Yeah.
I think you probably have them, but we keep records on all the hydrant tests if you need that.
Generally, yeah, we just, the fire department's always been very, very good about providing those results to the town of Stokesdale. We're glad to have them. We have them on file and just, we, we don't turn them down at all.
Yeah, if you need any extras, we keep copies of all of that.
And to your other point, the town's water system is certainly built for potable water. And it, it's, it's hard for the average citizen to look at a fire hydrant and, and recognize that it may or may not have the same flow as the one on the other side of town because of our, you know, systems limitations. It, it just kind of is what it is depending on which fire hydrant it is. And we don't have a, a ready means of correcting that and have the kind of pressures that Winston-Salem or Greensboro or some of the cities would have. They're just, the, the amount of money the citizens would have to come up with, they would, they'd come down here and hang us, I think.
And, and you made a point a while ago, and I think I, I'm no hydraulics expert, but I think it's a correct evaluation on your part. Six inch is great for me as a drinking customer out of my spigot. I get plenty of pressure. On a fire hydrant, the two inches difference makes a whole lot in the volume of water I get through in the end of a fire hose if your house is on fire. So it depends on what you're trying to accomplish and what you want out of the end of that hose when it's turned on as to which is the most valuable. So obviously, the most we can get is the best. And, and we're appreciative of every drop of water we get when we're trying to protect the citizens.
We're appreciative as well, Randy.
Any other questions that I can help from the fireside?
No, sir. Thanks, Randy. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, with that, I'll call question. Mr. Rigsby?
Rigsby's aye.
Derek is aye.
Jimmy's aye.
Tim Jones is aye.
All right, the motion passes four to zero. Next up is consideration of a quote by Hunter Enterprises for the maintenance of the soccer fields. Jim or Jimmy, which one of you guys added this?
I, I can speak on it. So I spoke to Mr. Hunter this week in detail about his services he provides to us. And to my knowledge, that we haven't had any issues with his service. He is a specialized mower. He uses a very, a very unique mower to, to cut these fields, a real mower. And he, he just, you know, expressed that he did not want to have to go up on the rate. However, cost of fertilizer is driving this, this increase. And, and I understand that. I understand that cost. From a, a parts committee standpoint, I do not want to, at this point, change vendors just because of the service we're getting and the quality of the fields. And so at this point, I would recommend that we approve this rate increase. I don't, I'm not sure, is it a, a contract? If we're going under contract or if it's just a rate increase?
In, in the past, we've had a contract. They're working right now with an expired contract at the old rate. So my recommendation would be entered, to, to enter into a contract. And I'm going to make a motion to do that. I'm going to make a motion that the town of Stokesdale enter into a contract with Hunter Enterprises of eighty-nine twenty Stires Ferry Road, Clemens, North Carolina to maintain our general use, general purpose fields, better known as our soccer fields. I make a motion for a two-year contract in the amount of twelve thousand dollars annually to be paid in four equal increments quarterly. Uh, the annual amount would be twelve thousand dollars and the quarterly amount, three thousand dollars.
Mr. Foy, um, just a, a point of, um, preference on this. He has already begun the, um, applications for February and March. So would it be, um, procedurally correct to establish that contract effective January first of this year? Because he's already started applying the, uh, stuff. And I know we like to keep our contracts kind of running on annual basis.
Um.
Mr. Attorney, can, can you address that?
I know of no reason you can't make a contract, the beginning date retroactive.
Okay. Uh, I, I'll accept the friendly amendment where this is, uh, effective retroactively of January first, twenty twenty-two. Is that what you were saying in your friendly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion on the table.
I'll second. Uh, we're going to need a budget amendment for the extra money because we're going to have a thousand in this budget year and then we'll have a thou- well, we've already put the, the thousand, uh, two, we actually put the two thousand during, uh, our budget meeting.
All right.
So we'd need to pull.
So, so I would, I would say, Jimmy, yes, we, item fourteen, I believe, is, is budget amendment. Uh, so we, we should say pending the approval of the budget amendment that's going to be talked about in about fifteen minutes. Uh.
Is that an amendment Jimmy needs to accept?
Would you accept that amendment, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right, I, I have a housekeeping question.
Yes, sir.
Do we, I, I'm familiar with Mr. Hunter and his work. I think I have spoken to him on the phone in the distant past. Uh, uh, this is a specialty kind of trade and, and, uh, he's one of the best, to the best of my knowledge. But the devil's always in the details. Do, do we have a contract with him already that we are renewing here? You know, what, what council has in front of us is one page dated, uh, July the third, uh, excuse me, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. And that is basically the application rate for, uh, pesticides and, and fertilizer and, uh, uh, promised to mow the fields two times a week. Uh, you know, just the standard housekeeping things about what the town's obligation is, what, what the contractor's obligation is. And, uh, uh, maybe, maybe perhaps insurance provisions. I would, I would hope, I would think Mr. Hunter has, has insurance. But, uh, you know, we should always endeavor to, uh, require reasonable insurance from anybody working for the town of Stokesdale. So these details are absent. What, what?
And, and they're great points. To your first question, uh, I, I guess in a way, this will be a renewal of an existing contract. There is an existing contract in place. However, I do believe it has expired, you know, a couple of months back. Uh, to your point about liability, uh, insurance, uh, and other insurance. Yeah, I, I would assume.
We can certainly request that he submitted updated with the version of the contract.
You, you know, we, we're in a, the world out there is what it is. And, and, uh, that it would be ludicrous for us not to require him to have reasonable insurance, reasonable for his, his business. Uh, general liability, workman's comp, the usual. Uh, and certainly, when, when he's in close proximity to as many children as we have in our parks, sometimes it becomes even more important. Or the application of these pesticides, for example, to, you know, to protect the town. So, uh, in, in this circumstance, maybe the attorney might have a suggestion for us.
I, I think it's certainly the having insurance is, is, uh, well, well taken. Uh, I haven't seen the contract. I'd be glad to, to look at the expired contract and, and see what it says to bring you up to date. To see whether it would, uh, as I understand this, you're, what you're talking about is just enter into a, either a br- one, one, a brand-new contract or number two, extending the current contract. So I think it makes sense to look and see what's in the current contract. If you're extending that and if you're not extending that, going brand-new one, again, is insurance included?
I think, um, I, I think standard procedure on the council has been to, um, have the, have the contract drawn up, have the attorney review it and, um, council review it, of course. So I think what we're voting on tonight is just enter, enter into a contract. But the contract has never been effective until those steps have been taken place.
Okay, for, for, for the sake of my vote, uh, folks, I guess what I'm willing to do is, is vote based on a entering into a contract that mirrors the previous contract with Hunter Enterprises with the exception of the information that's on this quote dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two being incorporated into the new contract in lieu of the, the previous information regarding these details. And I'm, I'm okay voting with that with the, uh, the, uh, requirement that the town attorney review that for those pertinent details uh, before the mayor auth- before we authorize the mayor to sign it.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to make this as easy as I know how and, and ta- and take my motion just off the table. And Tim, will you, will you be okay making that motion that you just said? Because there's no way I could say it more beautifully than that.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Foy.
So, so if you'll accept that as a motion, I'm going to second it.
It was not my intent to make the motion, but I will.
Funny how it works up here.
If, if you, if you wish to withdraw your motion and make my, uh, statement a motion, then I will, I will do so, sir.
Okay, then that's what I would like to do. And, and with that, I would second.
All right, Lord, let me see if I can rec- recall what I just said. Uh, my, my motion would be that we, uh, approve the quote from Hunter Enterprises dated March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two for a total of twelve thousand dollars. Uh, this quote including the application rates for pesticides, fertilizer and a requirement to mow the fields with a real mower two times per week. And that these, uh, this quote being incorporated into the previous contract we had with Hunter Enterprises by the town attorney and, and reviewed by the town attorney. Uh, and we allow the mayor to sign it with that provision that, uh, the town attorney approves the contract and approves the, uh, uh, all, all we need to do is get the con- contract reviewed by the town attorney.
And, and beautiful.
In Tom's absence, I'll give you an email address for me that I can
Yes, sir.
review that for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, fantastic motion and, and second.
Jim Rigsby's aye.
Yeah, I'm also aye.
I'm an aye.
Tim Jones is aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution to designate an official to make recommendations concerning the suitability of persons or locations for ABC permits in accordance with North Carolina General Statute eighteen B dash nine zero four F. Uh, Mr. Rigsby, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, this is a, um, something that this is not new, but it's new to this council. Uh, anytime a, a business or vendor or a, an individual applies for an ABC permit inside of our jurisdiction, then we are bound to, uh, investigate that entity of sorts. If it's an individual, you know, we would go out and maybe do a background on that person. Um, in this situation, um, there's a, an application for an ABC permit for Dollar General, an existing location already. Um, so, but what we've discovered in our, um, records is that we do not have a person of record on, on council at this time. I believe, uh, Councilman Bruno was the previous person, but that would no longer be applicable. So we need to designate a person that will basically oversee this process and sign on behalf of the town, ensuring that the, um, statute requirements are met for someone to apply. So, um, so that, that's kind of the gist of what this position will do, is just basically approve any, um, ABC permit request that the town receives.
Okay.
I don't think we get very many. I think this will be the first one we've had in two or three years.
It sounds like it was driven by, uh, Dollar, Dollar General.
Dollar General. So when you think back, I, I had to think about that for a minute. When you think back, that would be the last, um, business that opened up new in, in, in the town limits in the last three to five years. I don't know what would have been before that.
Well, from a, from a, maybe a general merchandise, uh, standpoint.
So it's, it's not something that happens often, but.
Okay, uh, with that, uh, uh, I'm going to make a motion. You know, there's a good chance Tim might even have a better motion. So Tim, you got a better motion hidden back there?
I get no respect, just nothing whatsoever.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to designate Jim Rigsby uh, to be the town's official to make recommendations concerning the suitability of persons or locations for ABC permits in accordance with, uh, for the town of Stokesdale or in accordance with North Carolina General Statute eighteen B dash nine zero four F.
I'll second that motion.
All right, is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second.
There, there is a little bit of discussion. Uh, I was one of the, the, in the minority that, that tried to fight off the ABC stores and, uh, liquor by the drink in the town of Stokesdale for, for reasons that I stated at the time and still. I'm a little guarded about this. There have been times when Stokesdale hasn't done alcohol well. So with that said, uh, is this just purely a housekeeping function uh, wherein if anybody makes an application to the town of Stokesdale for this purpose, that the town is legally required to approve the application?
Ap- absolutely.
I would say not required to approve it. This is a, a precursor to approval. As it's pointed out, someone's to look in and see the suitability of it and make a recommendation. Uh, but I don't, I don't think that any locality is required to grant an ABC permit to, uh, any particular business or organization.
So the framework is in place to allow a business to make the application uh, to the, to the state through the town of Stokesdale. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Whew. I think it's actually submitted to the ABC board first.
First.
I don't think it comes through the town first. I think it comes to the ABC board. And then it comes to us kind of as a, um, courtesy slash housekeeping.
Okay, so just to pay the devil's advocate, I could, I could perhaps advocate that I be the ABC designate me and, and then I turn them all down because, uh, you know, that's been my position in the past. But should we give Mr. Rigsby any kind of criteria to operate under to, to, uh, perform this function or, or hopefully if he, he's, has an issue he thinks he needs to bring to the town council, he, we trust him to do so? Is, is that?
I, w- with thirty years of law enforcement experience, I think Mr. Rigsby's, uh, well-suited to be this person and, uh, I trust him implicitly to, to raise any concerns to council that he may have. Uh, and certainly, this is not, this doesn't have anything to do with an ABC store. Uh, and I know, I know you know that too, but, uh, yeah, you know, then I just wanted to say that.
The ABC licensing, yes, yeah.
Right, although I think you and I have different opinions on that, but, uh, but yeah, I, I trust Jim to bring the issue to council. Uh, uh, I don't know what else to say.
Okay, the, the pressure's on him. I, I'm.
Never seen a council take a vote on one of these.
If I could direct you guys to, uh, uh, it's in your package to, uh, uh, it's one, it's eighteen B nine oh four F. It says local government objections. And I'll read this. Appears to be what applies to us. Um, it's kind of toward the, it's almost the last page in your package, the next to last page. And it's on, uh, page two at, at the bottom. So under F, it says, um, local government objections. The governing body of a city or county may designate an official of the city or county by name or position to make recommendations concerning the suitability of a person or of a location for an ABC permit. The governing body of a city or council shall notify the commission of an official designation under this subsection. An official designated under this subsection shall be allowed to testify at a contested case hearing in which suitability of a person or location is an issue without further qualification or authorization. Nothing in this chapter shall deem, shall be deemed to preempt local governments from regulating the location or operation of adult establishments, sexually oriented businesses. Doesn't apply here. So it sounds like, it sounds like we, we don't have the ultimate say. We would just, if we had a, an objection to this particular application, then we would designate someone to speak on the town's behalf and it wouldn't have to be a, it would already kind of be in place.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like we have a.
Well, I want to make it clear, I'm not calling into Mr. Rigsby's, uh, qualifications or competence to, to do this for the town. I think it's very appropriate for somebody that's probably been up on countless rec scenes where alcohol was involved. Uh, you know, he's, he's probably seen it all. I, I'm just simply saying that, you know, the, the, the Dollar General location has been mentioned. I have objected to an ABC store being, uh, and, you know, right beside of there in the past because of the close proximity to Stokesdale Christian Church. And that has been my position and it remains my position. So I, I just think we, we owe a duty of caution to our citizens and, and how we do these things. And so, you know, I'm, I'm ready to vote, but that's just where I'm coming from.
I would suggest that Mr. Rigsby is the, if he's elected, uh, so appointed, is the person that this statute refers to. Because it says the governing body may appoint, uh, a designated official. And I think he's the one that Mr. Bruno apparently saw, served in that capacity previously. And for whatever reason, is no longer doing that.
And there's a, um, document that basically we have to sign or I have to sign if elected to just say that we either, I assume have no objections or, so that's just kind of a piece of the application. Um, I, I think we're all kind of, um, new to this, um, this issue because it was kind of brought upon to me just very recently as well. So, um, without any further advice from the ABC board, um, all we can do is operate in what we know. And we don't have any, uh, it doesn't require us to do any kind of public hearings or anything. So at this point, I think it's just a matter of naming that official.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call question, Mr. Rigsby.
Aye.
Derek is aye.
Jimmy's aye.
Tim Jones is aye.
All right, the motion passes four to zero. Next up on the agenda is consideration of budget amendment number four to the FY twenty-two budget. Uh, I believe everybody should have the printed-out, uh, budget amendment ordinance change. Uh, I would ask that Kim speak to those, uh, and, and, uh, so Ms. Stacker?
Okay, um, let me get my sheet on here. I am requesting these budget amendments from council. The general fund for item number thirty-one hundred for advertising, planning and zoning to increase the budget by two thousand dollars, which would make our budget balance six thousand dollars. Um, I do have an invoice that is due for the newspaper for planning and zoning for advertising. Um, the check has not been written. And, um, and I'm also asking for an increase since you guys did just approve the, um, well, with Tim's motion, uh, for the loan and outdoor maintenance for Hunter Enterprises for two thousand dollars, which will make the balance forty-two thousand. And in order to balance this, I'm asking that council to decrease item number sixty-three hundred legal and professional attorney fees by four thousand dollars, which will bring the balance for the attorney fees to forty-five thousand three hundred. Do you want to do each fund or do the whole thing, Derek? Which?
Don't.
Okay, section two, I'm requesting from council, um, to amend the water enterprise and revenue expenses as follows. Item number twelve thousand three for engineering and infrastructure consulting. I'm asking that to be increased twenty thousand dollars, which will bring the balance to thirty-five thousand. And to decrease item number sixteen thousand one, which is electronic meter changeout by ten thousand, which would bring the balance to fifteen thousand. To decrease item number thirteen thousand eight, which is the water line repair by ten thousand, which brings that balance to twenty-five thousand.
Kim, thank you. Uh, it's, so in summary, what you've done is just moved money around from different line items. I, the total expenditures for the town is not projected to increase for either fund.
No.
Uh, I, I, I looked at the budget. Uh, I, I, I looked at the budget versus actuals, and, and these make sense. I understand why you asked for them. Uh, and thank you for your presentation. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, budget amendment number four for the FY twenty-twenty budget year, uh, dated four fourteen, four fourteen twenty-two.
Jim Rigsby will second that emotion.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion, gentlemen?
Thank y'all for having this in writing in front of me.
You're welcome.
Wouldn't have got it done no other way.
Alright, uh, with no further discussion, I'll call question, Mr. Rigsby.
Rigsby's aye.
Uh, Derek's aye?
Jimmy's aye.
Tim Jones is aye.
Okay, the motion, uh, passes four to zero.
Uh, if, if, if I may, on a related subject.
Yes, sir.
I, I would like to make sure, and I'm willing to make the motion, maybe we can make an administrative request, but in the past, we've not always gotten these budget amendments written out and attached to the, the set of minutes for the given meeting that they were voted on. I would very much like to make sure that these budget, this budget amendment is attached to this set of minutes when they're written and approved, and likewise, retroactively and, and going forward. I, I'd see, I think just, uh, there's, there's so much paper handled in this building that, you know, sometimes the intent's there, but it doesn't happen. And so is there any policy or requirement on this at the moment?
Uh, there, there's, I believe there's a statutory policy that, that any amendment to the budget ordinance must be written out like it has. I don't know if the statute goes as far as to say that it's in the, uh, uh, required to be in the minutes. Uh, but with that, uh, I will make a motion to make it a town policy that any budget amendment, uh, that council approves be included in that, uh, correlating set of minutes, uh, adopted by the town council, uh, for the town of Stokesdale.
I, I'll second that motion. I'd like to add the amendment. We make that retroactive back to last December when I, I was reelected to council.
Okay, I, I don't know that date. We'll call it, uh.
Uh, December ninth, I believe.
Uh, effective, retroactively, December ninth, twenty-twenty-one. And that's my motion. And Tim, I think seconded the motion?
Yeah, yes, I was.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, I'll call question. Jim?
Jim is aye.
Derek is aye.
Jimmy's aye.
Tim Jones is aye.
Alright, item twelve B, discuss the drink machine at town park. Tim, I suppose you don't want to start having that machine, uh, serve beer.
But I'd be the guy you need to talk to about that.
We have a point in somebody in that event, but.
Right, just talk to Rigsby. You see what I have to put up with. It's like it's at the fire station. Yeah, probably worse.
Alright.
Alright, to the best of my knowledge, this drink machine just materialized out of nowhere and was installed by someone that, uh, the town staff cannot determine who. Okay, n- number one, this is just not good. Now, you know, I don't know whether the citizens in Stokesdale would vote Coca-Cola, Pepsi, or go, go with something healthy. Um, my, my, it's, it's just, uh, this is no way to run a railroad. Uh, I, this thing is presumably someone is, is servicing this thing and making a profit off of it, and they have it plugged in to the town's power. Well, well, I object. I object to it being placed there without, you know, authorization, and I object to it utilizing the town of Stokesdale's power. Uh, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion. Maybe another council member here has a, has a, has an idea of what to do, what not to do. Any suggestions from anybody?
I don't, how, how long's that machine been there? It was there when I got here, so.
Yeah, I don't, I'm assuming you've looked at it and there's no, uh, number on it or information?
There, there is, and, and, and town staff has tried to get in touch with them and track this down, and it's been unsuccessful.
Yeah.
Alright, I, I tell you what, I, I will make a motion that the town, uh, property committee, if, if they're willing, uh, unplug this drink machine and, and wrap it with, uh, whatever's available, maybe a two dollar tarp, put an out of service sign on it, and, uh, at some point, we'll hear from somebody. If it becomes necessary, I, I would further authorize the, uh, property committee to disable the receptacle to it, either by turning it off or somehow locking it to prevent it from being plugged in again. And by extension of that, I would like to see the property committee make a good faith effort to calculate the power that's been consumed and bill the guilty party. Uh, that is my motion.
Well, I, I make a friendly amendment that, since you've got it all worked out, that, uh, we would authorize, uh, authorize you to do it and put your number on there and have them call you. Uh, and then, then we figure that out.
Yeah, before we ma- make that drastic of a, of a move, um, I'd do like to, to open lines of communication. So if, if I can get that information, that number, I, I'm pretty good about tracking people down. Um, and let me have a little, a little crack at it and see if I can find out who's it is first. And then we can, um, hold them accountable if we need to, instead of just randomly unplugging this machine and.
The numbers, the numbers on there, I mean, she's already called, uh, Coca-Cola, and the numbers on is from, there, there's no number.
They're, they can't give us a name of who it belongs to. It's just a number to call if there's a problem with it, and.
Okay, well, if you give me that number, I'll, 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 I'll run it down.
Alright, we have it back here.
So usually, uh, if you inform them that, that their machine is being relocated, they'll probably get some fine touch with us.
Uh, we, we have a motion on the table. Uh, Mr. Rigsby's asked Mr. Jones, uh, if, uh, Jim could look into it further. Uh, but right now, we still have a motion on the table.
Well, I already discussed this with the property committee. This has been an ongoing thing. We burning up staff time here. I really don't want to, uh, I'd like for my motion to stand, Jim, with respect. I just don't, uh, this is, I've been waiting and waiting for somebody to step forward and take responsibility for that, that machine and this mystery to be solved, and it just isn't happening.
Noted. Uh, Tim's motion stands. Do we have a second?
Well, here I go again. I've always said I'd second a motion to get it on the floor, so that is my second.
Alright, Jimmy's seconding it. Is there any further discussion?
Is my friendly amendment in there?
Would you, would you repeat it for me, Jimmy? I think the, the, there's a part in where, uh, the property committee, at least one property committee member doesn't want to deal with this. The portion therein where my number's going to be repla- replaced on it and me called directly, I, I just don't think I want to go there. That's why we maintain staff in the town hall. That's why we have all this, have a number of contact.
We can have them call town hall. That's what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I'm certain that if you, my, my feeling is if this is unplugged, wrapped up, and an out of order sign put on it, we'll hear from somebody. If, if not, our next conversation may be with the town attorney, what do we do with this property that's been abandoned on, left with the town of Stokesdale?
Sure, is, 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 is it working? I mean, is people getting drinks out of it?
I'd, I, for, 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 for the purpose of this conversation, I don't care. Uh, my, my issue is it's been placed there without authorization, and the town's providing the power for it. Can, council doesn't see this as an issue, then, then, then I stand alone here.
Well, from a property committee, I, I don't believe, we've had that discussion, so if you've discussed it with the other part of the property committee, then I'm not aware of it. So I would just ask that to have, as a property committee member, to have the opportunity to, to get a little bit more detail before we make a move. But I, I'm certainly, certainly in agreements with you that, um, we should not be allowing someone to just plug up to our power source and, and benefit from our, our power. However, I'd just like to have an opportunity to look into it a little bit more before I make a, a decision on it. And this would be, being this the first time it's been brought to light, I think it's reasonable to, um, you know, to look into it first, but I, I.
He has, he has talked about it. That's, that's why we, uh, contact, tried to contact the folks.
Okay.
Yeah, Coca-Cola, Coca-Cola actually gave a name and, and, uh, you know, couldn't contact the person, so, uh, but it was just a name from back what sometime?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't recall what the name was, but, um, you know.
Okay, we have a motion?
Brought it to actual council. I mean, we had never, you know.
Well, I, I was hoping it wouldn't come to this because of the council time, staff time, attorney time. I'd, I'm reluctant for us to keep maintaining it on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, uh, I'll call question, Jim?
No.
Derek is no?
I'm a no. Uh, Jimmy's aye.
Tim Jones is aye.
Alright, uh, with that, the, the, the motion at a tie, it fails, uh, ti- tied two to two. Uh, moving on to the next, uh.
I, I'd like.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, the, the next, uh, the, the May agenda, the next regular May agenda, that we address this issue conclusively, one way or the other, and get resolution for the citizens.
I'll second that motion?
If, if we can't do, I mean, this is ridiculous from my, my point of view.
But I, I understand, and, and for the record, I'm a, I, I didn't disagree with everything or anything that you said. Uh, my no vote was a courtesy to Mr. Rigsby.
And I don't agree with you, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you either, Tim, about the, the overall outcome. I'd just like to do some due diligence before we make a, a move on this.
Let's, let's do this. Let's at least put a sign, put a sign, uh, on it for the person, uh, who's in charge of this machine to, to call town hall. Uh, you know, some kind of verbiage, and, I mean, they, they've got to be checking it. I mean, it, like I say, I don't know if it's working or not, as far as, as I, I've never purchased a drink out of it. So if, if people are getting drinks out of it, somebody's filling it up, and somebody's collecting the money.
I agree.
So they'll have to see it, so, I mean.
We're not getting reports of it being out of order with people putting money in it and getting, uh, not getting a product.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, uh, to, to, to have this issue, uh, resolute, uh, resolution on this issue, uh, in May. Uh, is there any further discussion? Uh, if not, I'll call question, Jim?
Aye.
Derek is aye?
Jimmy's aye.
Tim Jones is aye.
Okay, the motion passes four to zero. Next up is, uh, citizens' comments, uh, from the floor. Maria, Dan, Randy, y'all have said your piece. Also, uh, it looks like we do have somebody joining us virtually tonight. Ma'am, would you like to speak?
No, I'm all good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for, for joining us. Uh, with no citizens' comments, that brings us to council's comments. Mr. Rigsby?
I would just like for everybody to, um, leave this meeting tonight, going into the holidays, uh, with a inspiration to be kind to one another, to, uh, be considerate over the holidays. Uh, there's a lot of, um, discourse in the world, and, and just try to do, do a little bit better for your part. Thank you.
Okay, Jimmy?
Uh, well, I'd just like to make mention that we've got a lot of problems overseas, and be thinking about these people. Shanghai is one place, they, they're doing COVID lockdowns, and, uh, it's, it's awful. People just need to look, you know, you had, probably had to look, uh, deep in the news to find it, but it's a terrible situation in the Ukraine and all. We're all doing pretty well here, and we need to really be thankful, really be thankful of where we live. We live in probably the best, I can't think of a better place to live, and, uh, and I certainly appreciate being here.
Well said, Jimmy. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Well, I, I would like to say I continue to talk to people about a charter school for the town of Stokesdale in some way, shape, form, or fashion. I, I believe in school choice, uh, that, whether that be homeschooling or, or the Beacon Academy on Southern Road, or, or, or whatever, uh, and certainly the Stokesdale Elementary School. It doesn't seem from my perspective that the Guilford County schools are, are giving the schools in Northwest Guilford County a, a fair shake when it comes to budget allocations. That board may see it differently, and, and I for one certainly recognize how hard this can be. But, uh, I certainly think that, uh, a conversation about a charter school would, would be in order for the town of Stokesdale to, to encourage and, uh, give that, uh, put that out there as a possible option for our citizens. In regards to the, uh, sales tax revenue, the town of Stokesdale's not, not receiving. This, this is something that's always on my mind. Uh, a number of years ago now, the town of Stokesdale was cut off from receiving a fair distribution of the sales tax funds that our citizens pay that go to Raleigh. Then they're sent from Raleigh to Guilford County, and Guilford County has the option, I believe, each March to decide to distribute that based on a per capita dis- distribution or ad valorem distribution. And we are, uh, at least I feel, being short-changed. And so I appreciate Mr. Suter being willing to, uh, to take a position regarding this in his campaign for county commissioner for District Three. Uh, certainly in the past, we've had mixed results as council members and a, and a board, uh, getting the attention of any county commissioner. Uh, sometimes it feels like we're out of sight, out of mind, out of mind, way out here in the corner of the county, except when we all get our tax bills. And so, uh, I just, I, I remain hopeful that we can at least, uh, maintain this as a, an issue for the town of Stokesdale, and, and perhaps get another town or two across Guilford County to, uh, advocate for the same, uh, same thing. The last time I ran through the math, it was roughly an adjustment required in the county budget of about two percent, two and a half percent, something like that, so we're, we're not asking for the moon. I know at one, at once here, at one time here, we made a, a, an adjustment in the town's budget of twenty-four percent for a, uh, supplemental contract we had with the Guilford County Sheriff's Department, which, uh, you know, right or wrong, I think it's worked out, but it certainly, uh, required some fortitude from council to, to make that bigger decision, instead of just taking the easy path of always spending more and more money. And then last but not least, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Easter, uh, one and all, and, uh, a safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Goodness. I, I, I think I'm going to wind up saying probably the most words here in closing comments, and I hope I can put all these words together into something that makes sense. If not, it's just going to be a bunch of words, and I'll apologize for that. First, I want to thank the citizens that are still here. Uh, Ms. Adams, Mr. Suter, thank you for coming. Uh, Randy, always thank you for coming. Randy's a staple at these meetings and a pillar of our community, uh, and, and, uh, of course, our fire service and fire safety. Uh, I want to thank staff, uh, for all their hard work, for, for putting up with us. Uh, I, I believe, uh, want to recognize Robin. She had a birthday last week, and I believe Priscilla has one next week. So we got some, uh, birthday girls on staff and, and wish them the very best. Uh, I, I also want to thank council. Uh, man, y- you guys are great to work with. I enjoy working with each one of you. Uh, you know, a lot of different personalities here, that's for sure, and, uh, you guys are great. Uh, it's a new council, and, uh, sure enjoy the interaction. Uh, let's see. You guys know I love sports. You know, last year, uh, the town made a resolution declaring NC State College baseball team having the best team in the country after what happened to them in the College World Series. So, uh, it's important that I'm consistent here, and I'd like to recognize and congratulate the student athletes from the men's basketball programs at Duke University and UNC, uh, University of North Carolina for their fantastic performances in the NCAA tournament. I know we've got a lot of fans here of those two, two schools in Stokesdale. Make no mistake, I am not one of them at all. But, uh, but, but, but those schools sure did give us a lot of, uh, entertainment enjoyment. Uh, it was, uh, it was a lot of probab- probably a lot more enjoyment from the UNC standpoint. Uh, uh, so congratulations to, to, to both those groups of fans. Look, I know, I love sports. People are passionate about sports in our town, and it starts at the youth level, you know, up to high schools, and, you know, it kind of frustrates me to see, look, I, I don't know at all, but I just read the news and read the internet and see that apparently, I, I think, you know, Grimsley High School, they're not, you know, not in Stokesdale, they're in Greensboro, but I feel their pain. Apparently their, their baseball fields are, are, are potentially going to be taken from them, and I feel like some of those folks may have been blindsided by Guilford County Schools' decision to, uh, rebuild Kaiser Middle School, where athletics. Middle School, where athletic fields are. Athletics, athletics is such an important part of, of, of development for these, for these kids, and to take their, their fields at their school, you know, it's, it's, I, I don't know the whole story, but from what I read, it, it's, it sure, sure is concerning and questionable, kids need to play ball. Also, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Mr. John Bell. I don't think anybody in this room probably knows who John Bell is, and definitely not the John Bell I'm referencing. John Bell was the lead singer of one of my favorite bands named Widespread Panic. Widespread Panic hails from Athens, Georgia. I've seen him in concert over one hundred times, anywhere between North Carolina and California and all points in between. My favorite spot I saw him was at Red Rocks in Denver, California, that's a beautiful place, a natural built amphitheater. The craziest spot I saw him was in New Orleans, that was quite a story in itself, but, but they're, they're a fantastic band, I love sports, I love music, I love music, but that does not mean I agree with taking seven hundred thousand dollars from the maintenance and repair budget line item from Guilford County Schools to build a recording studio. That's, that's crazy, with all the schools being in, in the disrepair, you know, they're in, it's kind of, you know, as an involved parent in the schools, it's, you know, I was surprised to hear it, it's, you know, somewhat a slap in my face. I love Guilford County Schools, y'all holds a special spot in my heart, started out at Laughlin, Summerfield, Northwest Middle, Northwest High School, you know, I, I consider, you know, Guilford County Schools given me the foundation that I needed for, you know, to have a well-rounded and, and great education, I love the, the sports, the arts, the music, and of course, your core subjects, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's successful, I, I think, I think it's fantastic, I'm really concerned about, you know, where we're going. You know, for, for the last six years, my wife and I, especially my wife, have given our most valuable resource, our time, volunteering for, for our wonderful school, Stokesdale Elementary School, we have so many fantastic teachers, have the best assistant principal in the world, in my opinion, just, just a fantastic group, you know, it is such a special place, and a lot of communities in our town feel that way, especially about our elementary schools, there's so much history there, and there's just so many good people, and, and when I see the school being, you know, in my opinion, neglected like it does, it, you know, it kind of hurts. But, but it's not just Stokesdale, so I, I, you know, I acknowledge that the bond, you know, that, that we're going to be voting for on May seventeenth is, is, look, I, I don't dispute that the school needs one point seven billion dollars for capital improvements, and, and likely more, it's going to cost more than that. I, I, I'm not going to vote for, for this bond, but I voted for the first three hundred million dollar bond, I'm a little bit concerned that, that the first, that only twenty-four million dollars has been encumbered, but, you know, I, I trust they're, they're going to spend their money wisely, but, you know, with the first twenty-four million dollars to go to design, you know, I, I wonder what we're getting out of that design, I mean, you know, did, did the schools hire, you know, Frank, Frank Lloyd Wright's disciples to, 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 to design these schools? You know, we don't need nothing fancy, we don't need anything fancy, excuse me, but, you know, something that serves utility, but, one document that I followed, because I have been following this twenty nineteen master plan closely, you know, it, it lists a lot of schools, I, I don't think it would surprise anybody in our community that our elementary schools are, are lower on that list, but the one point seven million dollars is just an incredible amount of money, and, and you got to look to, who, who is going to spend it, how are they going to spend it, what are they going to spend it on, and, and kind of look at how they spent money so far in decisions they've made. You, you know, all of it goes together, and, and I don't think my no vote to the bond is, is a no vote to the kids or the schools, I love the schools and the kids, you know, my heart is there, my time is there, I just would have preferred to see a, a smaller amount, maybe five hundred million dollars, to really tackle these repairs, maintenance, technology upgrades that we have now, that's something I could get behind, even if I don't, you know, disagree with, or, or even if I don't agree with, with who's on the school board or whatnot, that's beside the point, but for, I, I just question, what in the world are we getting for this one point seven billion dollars? I mean, to, to give you example, I mean, I, I look at this detailed spreadsheet, which is right up my alley, I love looking down the list and seeing the numbers and the cost projections and all that, I see Kaiser Middle School at, where are you at Kaiser? Forty-eight million dollars. You said it was going to be five, three times that much, five times that much? Holy smokes, that's not inflation, three times that much is not inflation, I, I, I'm sorry. And, and then the students were sent home today with this little information sheet, let's call it a, a fluff sheet, of, of what the money is going to be used for. Three hundred and sixty-three plus million dollars in safety technology upgrades for all schools, now you're speaking my language here, as well as major repairs for failing roofs, HVAC, and plumbing. Yes, that is needed. If you look at their live document from twenty nineteen facilities master plan, last updated in February, I may be missing something, but I'm only seeing two hundred and seventy million dollars budgeted for that, where's the other hundred million going to come from right here with one point seven billion dollars? You know, they, they, they said they're going to rebuild eighteen schools, yes, let's do it, but, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about this cost, you know, two of the schools they're talking about rebuilding, looks like that was already part of the three hundred million, so eighteen, unless there's something I'm missing, seems a little, I, I don't understand that, they're saying renovation of thirteen schools, well, if I look at the list here before we get to one point seven billion dollars, I'm only seeing eleven schools, so look, th, th, this is a good one sheet piece of paper, and maybe there's more detail out there, I love detail, I'm concerned when people see this, they think it's going to be the solution to the problem, one point seven billion dollars is, is, it's, it's not going to cause the whole problem, so I'm really conflicted, like, do I want to fix the problem, or do I not want to fix the problem? Well, I don't want to vote for a one point seven billion dollar bond, that's all there is to it, I would have loved to seen a smaller amount with a laser focused on safety technology and upgrades for all, all, and I mean all schools in this county, and let's start there, let's measure how well they do, let's hold them accountable, can they do it? And then, you know, best way to eat an elephant, you know, one bite at a time, and then maybe there can be a bond after that. I can be the biggest supporter in the world of a bond, if it makes good prudent financial sense. I just don't see where this one does, you know, I'm, I'm happy to talk to any citizen about my concerns, I'm happy to talk to any school board member about my concerns, my concerns rely, or, or, or generate from what I know of, of the current situation and past decisions made, but also, just looking at this, this huge list, and it's just, it, it doesn't seem, at the end of the day, I don't think folks, especially in the Northwest area, are going to realize the, any, much value from, from this bond, and, and, and I'll be the first to tell you, if it passes, I hope I'm wrong, I, I will monitor it, I will do my best as a citizen to hold them accountable to, to, to what they can do, to, 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 to give us the best value if it passes, but this is too much money, in my opinion, for, for, for me to vote on, and, and I think my no vote on this matter is just going to, is, 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 is the careful thing to do until we see a better, just, just a better presentation, I mean, sending this home with kids from school, I, I can understand how a parent might look at it and say, oh, right, finally, progress. I, I, I don't know, I'm concerned, I don't, I don't think we'll see the return on our dollar, and, but of course, if it passes, I, I pray that we do. That's all, it's nine o'clock for Stokesdale, that's fairly early to get out of a meeting, happy Easter to all, thank you again, folks, for, for being here, thank you so much to staff, council, you guys are great, Mr., Mr. Douglas, thank you for pinch hitting for us tonight.
Thank you.
And, and I hope, hope everybody has a great Easter.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Tim. I don't know if that made any sense at all.
So Jim Rigsby's second.
All right, I'll vote, aye.
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 Aye.